I'd like to call to order the Monday, April 27th, regular meeting. Would you please join Councilman Holman in the Pledge Allegiance and stay standing for the invocation?
I pledge allegiance to the letter of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Heavenly Father, as we gather tonight to say thank you for listening to our many requests throughout the year and heeding those requests, we thank you too for the safety of our first respondents. Your kindness to this community has been consistent and plentiful. We ask now that you continue with your protection and guidance. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Councilman Holman. The council is all present on the dais tonight, so we'll go on to the communication. We have one communication item tonight, that is to receive an update on the purchase of the New Age Fire Shelters. Nick Lyons, Fire Captain, present.
Hi, Mayor.
Oh, Nick's not here. Hello, Captain.
I just wanted to take the opportunity to introduce Captain Nick Lyons.
All right.
He had oversight in this program, the grant submission, and just wanted to give him an opportunity to come up tonight in front of you guys and talk about this grant.
Well, thank you, Chief Luizzi, for that introduction.
Good evening, Mayor, Council.
Good evening.
Just wanted to do, give you guys a quick overview of the grant that we received from Firehouse Subs and APS. So with the grant, we were able to purchase 25 fire shelters. You guys, I don't know if you've seen the fire shelters that are worn in wildland fires on the belt. Basically, it's a last resort type of survival tool that firefighters use. Quick history on the fire shelters. They've been around the fire service since 1977. They've saved hundreds of firefighters' lives. They basically look like a tinfoil tent, and it's a, like you said, it's a last resort for a firefighter if they can't get out of the fire. In 2002, next-generation shelters were adopted by the Forest Service and constructed with aluminum, some space-age kind of materials. They actually withstand higher temperatures, up to 500 degrees, and last up to 1,200 degrees for the safety of firefighters. So basically, in 2010, these transitions to the new fire shelters became mandatory for departments that want to work on national forest fires. You know, we do have the Goodyear Fire Department Wildland Response Team, which has responded to many fires around the country. Since the transition in 2010, the department, we had enough shelters for that mandatory transition, but as we grew and expanded, we did not have enough fire shelters for our first, our frontline vehicles. We made several attempts to secure grant funding for these, but they were unsuccessful. The original bid for the grant was Christine McMurty and Elaine Schmierbeck, and our senior staff were able to submit this. As a, even as a municipality, there's a lot of urban interface in Goodyear. We have the Hewlett River Bottom, Estrella Mountain Ranch, butts up to Corget Wash, and there's a lot of open farms and fields, so we have a unique urban interface in the city. We have taken steps to mitigate some of these risks. We've reduced fuels in Corget Wash behind the Estrella Mountain Ranch. We've identified areas at risk for wildfire. We've given community education and public awareness with HOAs. While we apply risk management models to our tactics, there's still a chance for harm. Even though it's a city, there was examples in 2007 in California, 12 firefighters deployed these shelters 60 feet from a highway. So even though it's a city, there's a, it doesn't change our tactics having these, but it does give us a chance to survive. So we would just like to say thank you to Firehouse Subs. In partnership with APS, they were able to award us a grant of $9,166. We purchased 25 fire shelters in February, and now they're on each one of our frontline fire trucks in the city. And this is just, they're basically just a big tinfoil tent that we wear on our packs. Like I said, we would like to recognize and thank both Firehouse Subs and APS for generously donating the funds to not only help the fire department continue to provide value-added customer service to the community, but also for ensuring that our members have every possible chance at surviving a bad incident, allowing them to go home safely to their families. And we do have tonight, in the audience, we have Wendy Avia from APS. She's back here. I just want to say thank you. Firehouse Subs, they've, their Public Safety Foundation has donated over $13 million, and they've affected over 1,000 communities and over 1,007 public safety organizations with their kindness and their grants. So hopefully, continue that partnership down the road, and we'd just like to say thanks.
Thank you very much, Fire Captain Lyons. And I know Council may have some comment before he goes.
I think I have to.
Well, Joe was going, oh, yes, you should. That's exactly right.
He's the vice mayor, so go ahead, Joe.
Councilman Stiff, go ahead.
No, I don't want, I'm still Councilmember Stiff Thunder, but again, I thank you.
That's all I have.
Thank APS, thank you, Firehouse Subs. I appreciate it, and thank you, and protecting our firefighters. Really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Councilman Stiff.
Yeah, Nick, and, you know, I know, obviously know firsthand, you know, what the age of our equipment and, you know, keeping it, keeping it up to date. I appreciate you guys being on the lookout for it, finding partners to get this done. It's, it's a mission critical for wildland, but wildland could be argued that it may not necessarily be mission critical for us, so it's good that we are truly able to tackle any hazard that comes before us as a city, especially as diverse as our, as our landscape is. So thanks for your hard work, and, you know, stay safe out there, because I think this is going to be a crazy wildland season.
Yes, it should be. Thank you.
Councilman Osburn.
Well, thank you. Thank you to APS and Firehouse Subs. And, you know, the only one Firehouse Sub that I even know about is in California. I don't even know of one in Arizona. Is there, oh, Buckeye, well, that's wonderful. I didn't know that. But, but, you know, I have to say, as diverse as our fire department is, having the ability to go out and use the equipment that we have to help other cities, help other states in fighting these wildland fires, but also at home, safety is number one. And, and I'm so glad that you have that protection. And, you know, I know it's rare when those occasions come about, but as we all know from Prescott, as we all know from other areas, they are, well, in some circumstances, they are something that will save that life. And so I'm appreciative, and certainly, as, as a mother and a family member of a wildland farmer, and the last thing that any one of our employees we want to have is their family members having a terrible news from something that we could have prevented. So thank you very much.
Yes, and once more, thanks to APS and Firehouse Foundation. And it's, it's definitely a peace of mind for the public that we have this. So thank you very much, and thanks for the presentation.
Thank you, Mayor, Council.
All right, we're going to go to the citizens' comments, and now is the time for citizens who would like to address the City Council on any non-agenda item. And I do have some speaker cards, but before you come up, I just want to let you know the position as a council by state statute that we have to take. The council will listen to the comments, and they may take any of the following actions: respond to this criticism, so if it's real strong criticism, they may respond; request that staff investigate and report on the matter; and thirdly, request the matter be scheduled on a future agenda. Each speaker is limited to three minutes. The yellow light and buzzer will let you know you have 30 seconds left to speak. So before you begin to speak, and before we start to time you, identify yourself by clearly stating, for the record, your name and address. So I have three cards on the intersection Elliot and San Gabriel, and I have one on another subject. So I'm going to bring the other one up first, so that you have some transition between your presentations. So I would like to, citizens' comment from Mario, oh, boy, Gola Funa? I know I didn't, that Funya, but I know I didn't do that right, so please do it justice. And you say your name again and your address.
Sure. My name is Marco Walotunia, and my address is 14200 Ben Buran Street, zip code, I don't remember. The reason why I'm here is because I, in December, I opened a 30,000 square feet of a gym that was designed for gymnastics, acro gymnastics, ballet, and cheer, TNT. And so far, I have been successful. I have 420 members. But I want to make sure that, because I'm hiring all the time, and I put a lot of ads in Google, Facebook, all the media, and I haven't had any success, so hopefully, by coming forwards here, I need at least another 10 teachers. Maybe I have good luck when I'm here. Thank you, that's the reason why I came, and to expose the gyms for everybody, whether you have money to afford the fees or not. You know, just bring your children, and I'll be very happy to serve. I came here to serve the community, and that's my intent, and I'm not going to leave without doing it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, the next one, let's start out on the intersection at Elliot and San Gabriel. So let's start out with Sarah Gilligan. Sarah?
Hello, my name is Sarah Gilligan, and I reside at 12503 South 175th Avenue in Goodyear, 85338, and I am in the Estrella community. I am here to speak in favor of the traffic signal at, excuse me, San Gabriel Elliot Road, Star Point Residence Club. I will refer to my notes a bit.
Go right ahead.
Thank you. My husband and I moved here in 2004 with our family, and we have seen both Estrella and Goodyear grow greatly, as you all know. Our family has been pleased to see the development continue in the residential areas in Estrella and Canomia, and we are really pleased to see the development grow in the marketplace. But with continued development in Estrella comes increased traffic, and with the approval of the Taco Bell drive-thru, which my kids are happy about, by the way, the intersection there at Elliot and San Gabriel and the Star Point Club will only get busier. And it's difficult for all of you to understand that it already is busy. The current traffic study may not show the number of vehicles or pedestrians to warrant the traffic signal, but if you could see the situation of the intersection, especially during the mornings and busy afternoons and evenings, you would understand why we are looking for a traffic signal there. Excuse me. The sun can occasionally hinder the view of the drivers, the curvature of the road approaching the intersection. Sometimes you can tell drivers are palm that intersection before they even realize there's a pedestrian halfway across. And when you add the fact that those pedestrians and bicyclists are using it, it's a disaster waiting to happen. The intersection is a key access point to the beautiful North and South Lakes, and we hold special events there for all residents of Goodyear. It will need extra monitoring, as hundreds and even thousands of people will cross there as this community grows. Currently, it really is a feat to cross successfully. Let's shade either. When our store point waterpark pool is open, many teenagers choose to cross and use the McDonald's, Subway, Papa John's, and our impending Taco Bell. It's common understanding that teenagers don't necessarily follow the laws specifically or are so careful, but a traffic signal would help bring safety to that intersection and certainly make them think before jaywalking. I have a question. Can the city ask Kitchell to, the developer, to pitch in for the signal? I don't know that answer. So with these thoughts in mind, I urge the City Council to act in a proactive manner with this intersection and choose to install the traffic signal before an accident happens. Thank you for your consideration, and I'm very appreciative of the time that you all commit to serving Goodyear. Thank you.
Ms. Gilligan, thank you. All right, the next one will be Jamie Rivera. Another one.
Good evening, Mayor, Councilmembers. My name is Jaime Rivera. I reside at 17854 West Paseo Way, Goodyear, Arizona, 85338. Basically, the Estrella Mountain Ranch area. Of course, I'm here to speak as a parent and also being present at locations where you see this traffic coming through, through the corner of San Gabriel and Elliot. You have a trifecta of danger there. You have the lakes, you have the water park, you have the school, which is PCA, and now you have numerous buildings and restaurants being built in the corner, such as Taco Bell, McDonald's. It increases the traffic, and I personally have seen situations where students, kids have almost ran over because people are unwilling to stop, or they actually cannot see the kids as the road curves around the corner. And so I wish that you consider, this is not by no means a criticism, this is assistance, asking you for assistance for you to seriously consider putting a stoplight there, or at least some stop signs. And that would assist us in making sure that our students, our kids, are safe. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Rivera. All right, the next one would be Suzanne McVoy, McOvy, Mc something. Tell me how that last name is spelled.
McAvoy?
Oh, McAvoy, for heaven's sakes.
Hi, my name's Suzanne McAvoy. I reside at 17850 West Paseo Way, Goodyear, 85338. I'm also here to speak in favor of the light. We use that intersection every day, not only driving, it's the only way, well, I guess we go one other way, but it is the closest intersection for us to leave our street. We live right behind the Safeway. I walk the lakes mostly every day with my children, and we have to cross with our double stroller. I can't tell you how many times we get to the middle of the intersection and we are stuck. I do wait until I do not see any cars, but as everyone has spoken about, and I think you're aware of, it's a very unique, you know, intersection. You've got the entrance, the sunlight in the morning, and in the evening, the different turning directions, the curvature of the street. So necessarily, it's not the pedestrian or the driver's fault, but a light would, those kinds of, you know, near collisions would not happen. I know my, about 18 months ago, I think my husband had written in, our son and him almost got hit crying across there, five years old, holding his hand, and for the mere fact that it was probably, the person did not see them, the sunlight, and coming around that bend heading towards Star Point. We picked our location because we wanted to be close to the amenities. We wanted to be able to walk to the lake or bicycle to the lake, or to the parks, or to the basketball court, or the schools, everything that is there. So myself, along with some other residents, have definitely are trying to bring light to this issue, and hopefully that you will consider a traffic light or some other kind of safety measure at that intersection to prevent a tragedy and keep residents safe. And I just wanted to let you know that we did, as I've sent you, a petition to support installing a light, and we are up to 339 residents that have signed that petition now. So that's an update from what I had sent you this morning. So I thank you for your time and your consideration.
Thank you, Mrs. McAvoy. All right, let's go to Todd Cunningham.
Hi, my name's Todd Cunningham. I'm here really just to support my wife and our two-year-old son. We moved to Estrella Mountain Ranch right around Thanksgiving. We looked a lot of different places, and we really just selected that area because it was the best area we felt to bring up our son. There was a lot of amenities, there was a lot of things to do outdoors. It seemed like a safe area, and this is really the one spot that we found that we have a problem with. I mean, we love living there. It's beautiful, the people are great, but the truth is that that area is just, it's just kind of a cluster. I mean, I found myself coming around that corner and not seeing somebody, and, you know, been grateful that I wasn't 20 years old driving anymore, because I probably would have been paying attention, and it only takes one second to look away, not to mention there's, I mean, four lanes on both sides with a big median in the middle. It just takes a long time to cross. There's just, it's just too long for that high of a traffic area, and it's the focal point of the whole entire community. So, you know, anybody that comes in there that's not familiar with the area and doesn't know there's, you know, a blind corner, you know, could potentially really hurt somebody, and it's really just not what that community's about. That's it. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Cunningham. So I guess I'll call your wife up next, Vanessa.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. I'm Vanessa Cunningham, 10159 South 184th Drive, Goodyear, 85338. Like you said, we recently moved here. We haven't been here long enough to see the amount of traffic, even though we have seen a lot of traffic go past that specific area at San Gabriel and Elliot. We like to get outdoors a lot, and the one instance where we were crossing that specific crosswalk, my son and I were almost hit by a car, and, you know, it just take, like you said, it takes one time, and, you know, God forbid, it would take a fatality, you know, to install a traffic light right there. I'm not for tons of traffic lights everywhere, but it's just become such a problem, hearing different stories and seeing accidents there. It really has become an issue. And, you know, God forbid, something happens to one of us or any of the other families out here. So hopefully, you guys can take in consideration a traffic light right there at San Gabriel and Elliot, and we would all appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Kelly Maza.
I have water, I have everything, and I can't see a stop. I've got mine, thank you.
Hi, my name is Kelly Maza. I live at 10212 South 185th Avenue, Goodyear, Arizona. I want to talk about the intersection at San Gabriel and Elliot. I'm here today to let you know as a voting citizen that I'm glad to be part of the process. You're allowing the citizens to get together with the city and show your concern for our safety. A motion sensor, if I'm using the right terminology, I don't know, light, street light at this intersection is needed for the safety of children who cross over at Star Point Club and travel down from Estrella Elementary School to get to the many places to buy snacks or treats after school. A motion sensor, street light, is needed at the intersection for the families who use PCA, and I'm one of them, a preschool that is right at the end of the shopping area called Estrella Marketplace. It's a constant worry leaving that intersection. I'm always thinking, I gotta put my cellphone down, this is where I'm going to have an accident. It's also important that we work together for this safety issue and not just be a number. We are faces, we are families, we're not just a study or statistic. So when you go back and look at all your numbers, see our faces, see our children, because we need to work together as a team, because safety is pretty much everybody's priority. So I am proud to say that as of 1:00 PM tomorrow, I'll be fully a homeowner in Goodyear, Arizona, and I'm also proud to be here, letting you know that I feel that you are seeing us as a team for the safety of all of Goodyear citizens. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much, and I want to thank everybody that's come up tonight. You're well organized, you're well prepared, and you've sent the information to us, and we certainly will be considering it. Thank you very much. I think that ends it. Do I have any more?
Make a comment?
Armie?
Make a comment, please.
What comments can the council make?
I have very little, just one minute.
Yeah, okay.
Request that we investigate the matter further, or request the matter be scheduled for a future council agenda?
Can you hear her?
I'll keep my comment very narrow.
Are you doing one of those three things?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, then you're good.
Because I think this was comments that were directed at the council.
Negative comments?
That's all I want to do.
No, I don't, I don't.
All right, here, how about this? May I ask a question of the city manager?
If you want to do it that way, I just want to keep us out of trouble.
At tonight's work session, we had a discussion about this issue. Can you relay to the public what the outcome of that decision, discussion was?
I'm looking at legal counsel, and we are restricted in how we comment. It was part of the work session discussion earlier, yes.
And that we were favorable of that would not be an appropriate thing to say?
Yeah, but you just said it.
I am going to just say, and if the attorney happens to coach me otherwise, but this was discussed at the work session that started at 4:30 tonight. It was a second item on the agenda that looked at several intersections throughout the Goodyear area, and this is one that is, right now, it is part of the recommendation to go forward for council consideration as we finish up the budget.
Couldn't have said it better myself.
So thank you very much. The problem is, this is state statute, and we can get in trouble as a council, and if somebody out there just decides, just for their sake, they want to get us in trouble, we can give them the ammunition for that tonight, and so we have to be very, very careful. So I'm going to close this discussion right now, and we're going to, and thank you very Now, I was going to ask, though, is there anybody else in the audience? Because those that did not fill out a card, if there's somebody else that wanted to speak tonight, you are allowed to come up. So before I go on to the meeting, I want to clarify that. Are we all right? Okay, let's go on.
Mayor?
Oh, yes. Again, please come up and identify yourself. I should have said that before I went on, so.
My name's Rachel Mitch. I'm the preschool director at Phoenix Children's Academy, and I'm very much in support of having this motion, traffic sensor, whatever the light thing is with the three colors on it. Preschool joke, just kidding.
You sound just technical there.
No, very much. We send children on field trips across the street to Star Point, so it is a very big concern for us, making sure that we are able to keep, continue to keep our children safe. And I, as a parent, it is very stressful just getting out of there, and I know it's nerve-wracking sometimes to say it's stressful to make a left-hand turn to get to Estrella Parkway, but it is, especially with all of the walkers, the bikers in that area. It's definitely a concern, and I'm very much in support for the, for the change. Thank you.
Thank you.
May I ask her where her school is located?
Yes, could you come back up and tell us where the school is located?
Yeah, tell me exactly where your school is located, and tell me the name of it again, so that I can absorb all this information.
Sorry, it's Phoenix Children's Academy. It's located at 17670 West Elliot Road. We're actually attached in the Safeway Shopping Plaza. We're the westernmost location.
The furthest point of that. Okay, thank you. Thank you very much.
Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
I thought she was in school.
All right, well, the city, we're going to go on to, let me, let me get my pages straight here. All right, so, with the city, please read the consent agendas, items 6.1 and 6.2 by title only, please.
Item 6.1, approved draft minutes from a regular meeting and a special meeting held on March 23rd, 2015. Item 6.2, approved the amended final plat for La Ventiya Phase 1, subdividing 14.8 acres into 110 single-family court home lots and 11 tracts located at the northwest corner of Cereval Avenue and Portland Street within the Canyon Trails planned area development, subject to stipulations.
Thank you. Does anyone from the public wish to remove an item from the consent agenda? Does anyone from the council wish to remove an item from the consent agenda? Councilman Stiff?
I have a question on 6.2.
All right, can somebody come and address 6.2? That is the La Ventiya, subdividing? Okay.
Mayor and Council, good evening.
Hi, Joe. Good to see you. The question that I have about this particular final plat is, I noted that this has homes built right up against the freeway, which is currently discouraged in our general plan. Was this, and, but this is a final plat, was, how long ago was this platted, and was that before the last general, before the general plan?
Was that, and was that before the last general, before the general plan was approved?
Mayor Lord, Councilmember Stip, this is locating the Canyon Trails and the land use was set down back in 1998. This area was reserved for townhomes and court homes and so the, the use is appropriate to the zoning, even though we don't necessarily encourage that type of development next to the freeways currently.
Okay, that's really all I wanted to know. Thanks.
Councilman Osborne?
Thank you, Bill, for that.
Trying to head you off.
I appreciate that. I would like to ask that this be moved to the regular meeting to vote. Actually, since I have to vote against it, does this, can this still be on consent or do we need to bring it?
You can vote no.
Well, I understand that. I just wasn't sure of process, so I just vote no.
I think you'd probably want to remove it from the agendas, have a separate vote on this, this one item, so you would.
Because it is, it is with the minutes.
Right, you're not voting on the consent agenda because you want to approve one portion of it.
So, Mayor, I would ask that it be.
I need a motion for that.
Yes, you do.
So a motion to move 6.2 to the main agenda.
So moved. Second.
All right, I heard the, I heard the, a motion by, you were taking the motion? A motion by Vice, Vice Mayor Pizzillo and I heard a second by Councilman Stip. So 6.2 will be moved to the business agenda. Okay, so don't go far away, okay? So, so we've had that, we have a motion, so can I have a roll call vote, please?
Vice Mayor Pizzillo?
Aye.
Councilmember Osborne?
This is, what we're doing on this one is for.
This is just the minutes, correct? Okay. Or is this the vote on moving it?
This is the vote to remove it.
That's what I thought it was.
This is the vote to move it to the other way.
Aye.
No, I just want to make sure.
Vice Mayor Pizzillo?
Aye.
Councilmember Osborne?
Aye.
Councilmember Lortano?
Aye.
Councilmember Campbell?
Aye.
Councilmember Stip?
Aye.
Councilmember Homan?
Aye.
Mayor Lord?
Aye.
Passes 7-0.
All right. So then, can I have a motion now on the minutes in a second, please?
So moved, second.
I heard a motion by Councilman Osborne and a second by Councilman Lortano. Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Osborne?
Aye.
Councilmember Lortano?
Aye.
Councilmember Campbell?
Aye.
Councilmember Stip?
Aye.
Councilmember Homan?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Pizzillo?
Aye.
Mayor Lord?
Aye.
Passes 7-0.
Okay, so we're not having a public meeting tonight, right? That was canceled. So can I take this out and take it down to the first item?
Mayor, I believe you still need to vote on 6-2.
I'm sorry.
Isn't that right?
You need to vote on 6-2.
6-2, you'd, you'd have consideration.
I thought, roll call vote, sorry about that. Oops.
Okay, so this is for 6-2. I need a motion in a second.
I thought I did a motion.
That was on the minute, that was for the minutes.
That was.
I thought we did it twice.
Had a motion to.
All right, give me a motion.
So moved. Second.
Motion by Vice Mayor Pizzillo and a second by Councilman Stip. Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Lortano?
Aye.
Councilmember Campbell?
Aye.
Councilmember Stip?
Aye.
Councilmember Homan?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Pizzillo?
Aye.
Councilmember Osborne?
Nay, and can I make a comment?
Mayor Lord?
So nay.
I'm sorry, you're just totally confusing me what you're doing.
I wanted to make a comment on before.
They were considering the 6.2, so you didn't really open it up for the, for comment if anybody had any comments on it. So it would be appropriate for her to make her comments right now.
For the record, my comment would be that this was a, an item that came to us a few months ago, at least within the last year. And I do appreciate the developer that did listen to council's ideas on how to make the, the two different parcels work together and configure open space better. But I do disagree with having homes adjacent to a freeway, so that is why I'm voting against it. Thank you.
And Mayor Lord, I still need your vote.
Aye.
Aye. Passes seven, 6-1.
All right, so I'm going to take your guidance. Can I now go with that 6.2 and put it on the business? We just did that.
It's already done.
I was in the business, boy, I tell you, I'm totally confused. I may have to go down in the audience and let somebody else come up here tonight.
172.
Okay. I'm more at some point. So we're on the business 7.1, so let's take it. A public hearing for a special use permit for Interro Montessori School has been canceled, but will continue at the May 11th council meeting. So 7.2, two items on the business is considered the primary plats for Paseo Place Parcel 1 and 2. The two items will be presented together, but the action will take, be taken on each, Chris Floden, architectural planner, to present.
Good evening, Mayor Lord, council members. The request is for approval of a preliminary plat for Paseo Place Parcels 1 and 2. The preliminary plat for Parcel 1 consists of 39.4 acres and will be subdivided into 136 lots, single-family, and 13 open space tracks. The preliminary plat for Parcel 2 consists of 77.64 acres and will be subdivided into 214 single-family lots and 26 open space tracks. Prior to subdividing a property, the owner must submit a preliminary plat that demonstrates compliance with the public objectives and subdivision design principles. The general land use plan designates the subject property as neighborhood. The development standards for neighborhood allows for low-density residential, including single-family detached and attached product. The 2025 general plan encourages neighborhood development that supports the city's desired community character and vision by providing open space, trails, and internal and external connectivity. Parcel 1 consists of 136 lots on 40 acres and Parcel 2 consists of 214 lots on approximately 78 acres. The existing land use surrounding the property, to the south is La Pradera Residential Development with a density of approximately two units per acre. To the east, Maricopa County with a R-43 zoning. And to the north, La Privada Residential Development with, with a approximate density of three units per acre. And to the west, Los Ventanas Residential Development with a density of three units per acre. Also, there's a single-family residential house on approximately two acres. Paseo Place will be located at the intersection of Yuma Road and 183rd Alignment. There are two main entrances to Parcel 1, access along the eastern portion via 183rd Avenue, and also along Yuma Road. There are also two main entrances to Paseo Place Parcel 2. Both access, access points from this is along the 183rd Alignment to the west. All roadways within the development will be built to the public standards and dedicated to the city of Goodyear. Per the city of Goodyear Parks Recreation Trails and Open Space Master Plan, there's a planned north-south pathway that is approximately located at the 183rd Alignment. This pathway will be along the eastern and southern edges of Parcel 2. A portion of the right-of-way along Yuma Road is set aside to be part of the Maricopa There are two typical lot sizes within Paseo Place. Lot size 1, the smaller lots are 60 by 120, and the larger lots are 70 by 120. Offering two different lot sizes will allow the development for a wider range of square-footage for home plans. This is a breakdown of the lots within each development. As I stated before, 136 in Parcel 1 and 214 in Parcel 2. The entry monument for the community will be located on the southeast corner of Yuma Road and the 183rd Alignment in Parcel 2. Parcel 1 consists of approximately 21% open space and the applicant is proposing some very unique concepts to, to deal with the open space. The first concept is a community garden with a remata. The concept of community gardens are being developed around the cities nationwide and they promote a sense of ownership to the residents within the community. The second concept would be a butterfly garden. The butterfly garden consists of small herb garden, benches, a plaza, footpaths for human interaction within the garden. Plantings will be offered to attract butterflies and flat boulders will be planted for sunning and grasses used for shade. This creating a natural habit, this creating a natural habitat and a vibrant, colorful Another feature of the butterfly garden will be information boards about butterfly gardens for residents to learn for all ages. Parcel 2 will consist of approximately 27% open space and it will also have a butterfly garden and multiple open space tracks. As stated before, the entry monument will be located on the southeast corner of Yuma and the 183rd Alignment. And there will also be a local park, remata, picnic benches, barbecues, and a multi-station playground. The southern portion of Parcel 2 will also contain an open plaza and, and tot lots and another barbecue section with remata. We did notify Phoenix Goodyear Airport and Luke Air Force Base and given the location and the nature of the proposed use, neither the airport nor the base's operations would be adversely affected. Citizen review is not required for a preliminary plat and the Planning and Zoning Commission considered this application at their regularly scheduled April 15th meeting and no comments or concerns were, concerns were voiced from the public. During the meeting, a few stipulation, a few of the stipulations were revised and commission voted 6-0 toward recommending approval towards council. In closing, staff recommends approval of the request for preliminary plat with stipulations. The development of the parcel should be in conformance with the preliminary plat dated February 25th. And that concludes my presentation for this evening. I'm available for comments and the applicant is also available for comments.
Thank you, Chris. Nice presentation.
Thank you.
Are there any speaker cards?
No, Mayor.
Would anybody in the audience like to speak? Then I, could I please have a motion and a second to approve a request for the preliminary plat from the Melkor Development Arizona, Inc., to subdivide approximately 39.40 acres into 136 single-family residential lots and 13 open space tracks for the development known as Paseo Place Parcel. Second. One generally located at the northwest corner of Yuma Road and 183rd Avenue Alignment in an R-1-6 single-family resident zoning district, subject to stipulation. I wanted to see that you can do that, same mistakes I do. I just want to put you all in my same boat I'm in.
That's okay.
Okay?
We're good.
All right. Could I have a motion?
Yes, yes, yes.
Thank you.
Second.
I heard a motion from Councilman Campbell and a second from Councilman Osborne, so now we're open for council discussion and I believe there's gonna be a lot on this. Who wants to start first, of course? Go ahead, Councilman Osborne.
Well, is our, Mr. Patton, is he here, the, the developer? Would you, thank you. Thank you, sir. I just, and ma'am, I just wanted to recognize you guys because I, I really believe that you, you hit all the good points that really our citizens and our general plan kind of outlined to, for new development. And, and I'm excited about it. I mean, we have the trail system going through it, we have uniqueness with the butterfly garden, we have the community gardens that many people have asked for, and so I'm very excited about it and I appreciate that you put the time and energy into those things. I think my only question that I kind of figure I know the answer to, but being that these two parcels are going to be like this, is this going to be HOA maintained for these special attractions, so to speak? How, how will the community?
In the gardens, you mean?
The gardens and the community gardens. How are, how are you going to be addressing those, those issues with the neighborhoods?
Mayor Lord, Councilmember Osborne, I can answer that.
All right.
The, the open tracks will be maintained by the HOA and, and the path along the eastern and southern connection, that pathway, that will be open to the public as well.
Oh, wonderful. Thank you. That was all I wanted to say.
Councilman Lortano?
I have a couple of questions and one is just logistically, because I, I really like the idea of the butterfly garden. I think that's really kind of cool and unique.
It's very unique.
But I, I, and I don't know how you do this, because I've only seen them at like the Arizona, whatever the.
With the netting, you walk.
Botanical gardens over there. I've gone to the Butterfly or Chandler. How do you keep the butterflies there from like going away or getting?
Chris, would you like him to come to answer this?
Yeah, I'll help look at the applicant.
I'm just curious, how do we keep this as an amenity, not just a?
Big sun rocks, is it?
It's the plants that they put in. The plants attract them.
It's a really cool idea. I'm just not sure how it works so that we can keep it going as an amenity.
My name's Mike Buschbacher. I'm with Hadley Design Group. We did the concept for the butterfly garden. We can't keep the butterflies there, but we can attract them. And that's the whole intent, was to provide plants that were permanent, such as lantanas, sages, salvias, senas, that would bloom consistently throughout the year. And then we provide the places that they like to go, flat rocks that are warm, and then we just kind of make the community aware of it. And then we've provided something that they can take part in and try to help attract those butterflies there. So there's obviously no way you can keep them unless you put in nets or something.
No, and then my other question is, with the open spaces, there's a park there which is really good, that fits everything. Do we have enough, are some of the open spaces usable for like fields for kids or are they flat and grassy, some areas?
Mayor Lord, Councilmember Lortano, yes, as you can see in the southern portion of Parcel 2, there's a huge open plaza there and then where the, where the tot lot is, there's also open grassing, grassy space. Let's flip back here. There's also, you know, this long linear park that's connected with the rematas and the tot lot within Parcel 2.
Yeah, I, I couldn't tell on that, so that's large enough to, for soccer goals or something along those lines?
Yeah, I don't know about large enough for soccer goals, but there are, there are large spaces that, that can be used to play in.
And then my last question I have is about the schools. It said that this is gonna be, go into the Liberty and Buckeye districts? And have you contacted the districts and what does it meant by a donation is going to be made to each, a land donation for a future school? What are we talking?
That is a great question. I don't think I have the answer to that. I would maybe.
I'm sure we, I'm sure we can get an answer to that.
Is that the compact?
Yeah. Here we go.
I wasn't sure they reserve sometimes a portion for a future school or what we're talking here.
Hi, my name is Chris Patton. I work with Rick Engineering Company. I personally am not the developer, so I was the applicant for. And I don't know the answers on your question specifically with regard to what the donations are. I know that during the final plating process will be, in the developer agreement, will be handled through those sorts of things, so I don't know specifics on that.
I think we have a staff that will come up and say that. Katie, can you address this, please, for the public?
Thank you.
And for Councilman Lortano?
Thank you, Mayor and council members. We don't have a specific amount. What the city requires is a letter from the school at the time of final plat approval stating that the developers contacted the school, worked with the school. As you can see, in this case, they won't dedicate a site for the school, so they would do some type of INLU fee payment and that would be negotiated.
Like per student, right? Something like that? That's normally how it's done.
Yeah, per student, so they create calculations on how many student demand is expected to be generated and then they'll work directly with the school district and then the staff requires a letter from the school district saying yes, that that's taken place and it's acceptable on both sides, the agreement.
Could you let us know when we get that? Because I know our schools, those have gone through budget cuts, those districts really recently, and so that's a, a concern to put, before more pressures put on them.
Thank you, Councilmember Lortano. Absolutely. We will keep you informed.
Councilman Stip?
Is, this is kind of a generic question about the area. This is part of the West Goodyear. Is this the? Is this the, is this the first or the second subdivision to be preliminary platted in this area?
Do you want to put that screen back on too that showed the, the overhead?
No, I know, I know where it's at. I was looking at, you know, Google Maps is what I was checking out, but.
Mayor Lord, Councilmember Stip. There are two properties that already have final plats. You have La Jolla Vista and Pradera. They both have final plats out of the West Goodyear properties. This would be.
Those are off of Citrus and Broadway or were those Perryville?
Um, La Jolla, oh, and I believe Amber Meadows has a final plat as well.
That's why I say I think the overhead sort of kind of gives you an idea of the land mass.
But there's, there's a couple of properties that already have final plats in the West Goodyear, Goodyear area. Paseo Place has come in and Los Ventanas is working on their preliminary plats in West Goodyear as well as is La Privada.
Katie, since this is up, can you come and just point out, describe where the eries are for those developers that are coming in and those other plats?
The next thing I'm about to say may be completely irrelevant.
Thank you, councilmembers. You're really testing my, my memory here. La Privada is to the north. La Jolla Vista is, I believe, right here and they, they have final plat. They, they've received final plat approval from city council but have not yet recorded. Amber Meadows is to the north. And Pradera? And Pradera.
Kind of in that same general area. Okay.
They're, they're all adjacent surrounding this.
All right. So my, my question's going to get back to the fire protection for the area. It mentions in the staff report that this area is going to be preliminarily covered by Station 184. And then will be, protection will be provided by a station at Harrison and Citrus. But Harrison and Citrus is not programmed to start until 2022. So as we preliminary plat all of these things, we are creating a giant section of the city that does not have fire protection that meets our current standard. I just want to make that statement.
And so the statement means we should stop?
I'm just making sure that we are completely aware of what it is we're going to do. That's all.
I'm asking staff, are you completely aware, chief, that there's a possible, would you like to come up and just say a few words? That there's a possible chance or a new fire station is going, so let's not make it a mystery. Just kind of tell us about it.
This is a hotspot indicator for us that we've been watching over the last two years. Currently, we are seeing about 30 calls for service a quarter in that area. So we'll continue to watch this and as development grows, we're expecting.
What is a number of calls that would, would alert?
The triggers. When we came to council last time, we, we talked about numbers from 500 as a trigger, distance from fire station, and also response time as triggers as well. So those three. Council directed me at that time to come back regardless of how many I met to start to tell them about those, those triggers. Obviously, we know the area and the distance from the stations currently, but from a call volume standpoint, it has not met that, that trigger at all.
Does that help?
Yep.
Thank you. Any other, wait, Volly, Councilman Campbell, sorry.
I have three questions. Chief, not from you though. Thank you very much. Sorry. Excuse me. What were the stipulations from planning and zoning? They said they passed with a vote with some stipulations.
There's always stipulations down there.
Was there unusual stipulations or normal stipulations?
Mayor Lord, Councilmember Campbell. The stipulations, majority of the stipulations dealt with the planning of utilities and the installation of water lines and.
Formal stuff.
Correct.
All right. My second question is, did I hear you say that there was going to be a Ramada somewhere in each of these developments?
Yes, that is correct.
In both of them?
Correct.
Because those homeowners need a gathering place somewhere, especially if they want to have a picnic.
Let me get to the slide here.
Yeah, I missed it. I couldn't tell. I, I saw the tot lot and that was nice.
So actually, this will be a better shot here. So next to the community garden in parcel one. There's a planned Ramada there with benches, picnic tables and a barbecue.
What about two?
Parcel two.
Is it in the butterfly garden?
It is not.
It is not.
Right there.
So.
The corner in the lawn.
Correct. There's a Ramada planned for there, tot lot, barbecue, picnic tables.
Great.
And then also in the southern, so you can see there, and then also in the southern portion as well, there's a sport court and a planned Ramada.
All right. I really appreciate you making a provision for a tot lot because obviously you want to get the young families that have children and they need someplace to go and we appreciate you doing that. And the last question I have is because of the way the parcels are being placed and we also have another development that has already done their final plat, are we going to need traffic signals? And if so, are we talking to the developer about it or not?
Would you like to address?
Yes.
Is that a yes?
Yeah, I would, there would, I'm not sure if there's planned traffic signals, but I would assume.
Katie, let Katie address this and this part, sorry. You're doing a, doing a good job, Chris. It's just some of the deep talk about on the lights and things. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor and Councilmember Campbell. The development agreements, but we address some of the traffic signals and who's responsible. But those stipulations, and this is standard, whenever a developer is responsible for a traffic signal, we repeat that in the stipulations that they're responsible for 25% of the traffic signal at such and such location. So all of the plats that have been going through, we put that as a stipulation of the approval of the plats.
My concern was the 183rd alignment, there's nothing there now. And there's Yuma Road, which is very busy. And when those homes are built and the other development is done, you're going to need a traffic light just for the safety of the residents. So thank you very much.
If there's nobody else talking, I just want to say that presentation we saw, the overhead, it almost like a, like a drone took that is that, I mean.
It's Google Earth. I just used Google Earth to create the video.
I have to tell you, this was, was, was this not easy to, to view and understand? We asked about the additional, I, I would like to recommend more of these being done like this. It was very, very nice. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, so I guess we're ready to vote on this. So all in favor, say aye. Aye. Oppose? The ayes have it. Thank you very much. So now we'll consider parcel two. Are there any speaker cards?
No, Mayor.
Would anybody in the audience like to speak? Then could I please have a motion and a second to approve a request for the preliminary plat from the Melkor Development Arizona, Inc. to subdivide approximately 77.64 acres into 214 single-family residential lots and 26 open space tracts for development known as Paseo Place Parcel Two, generally located at the southeast corner of Yuma Road and 183rd. Do I hear a motion?
Some of, second.
Heard a motion from Councilman Osborne and a second by Councilman Holman. Okay, open for council discussion. Any council discussion? And I did actually didn't say the last sentence was on the next page, but it's in, the alignment is on R1-6, single-family residential zoning district subject to stipulations. All right, so we have all said here. Did I ask for a motion? Could I have a motion, please, in a second?
You got it.
I just did. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it. Let's go. We're done. So let's go to the comments from council.
Well.
Who would like to start? Councilman Hambell.
This past week, I was in the Dallas metropolitan area and I saw the specific crossings with the flashing lights. And I met with the city engineer from McKinney, Texas, and they do do that in a lot of their crosswalks. And I know we saw pictures of them and I just wanted you to know, I've seen the real thing and it's very noticeable and it looks better in person than it did in the slides that Luke sent us.
Very good. Next? Yes. Vice Mayor Vazella.
Well, a lot of us, we're at the, and I'm sure everybody will have something to say about it, this weekend at the Harkins groundbreaking. And I tell you, I was, I knew we had an outcry from people that really wanted that theater, but there had to be.
Thousand people.
Thousand people there. Dan Harkins and the developer did it right. You know, there was popcorn and freebies, they gave it away. And there had to be a thousand residents, the largest, I guess, largest event, you know, where the public had shown up. I've been on ever since I've been in council here in 2009. So hopefully, the developer that was there saw that because they also mentioned one of the more recent restaurants, Oregano was well above the numbers they had estimated. So I'm hoping he sees that and takes away from that to some of the retailers about maybe moving some of the things up a little quicker. I'm hoping, you know, because again, it was just amazing to see all those people show up and there's, we were all there that could, you know? So, I mean, it was just a fantastic event. And to me, that tells me we're ready to go to the next step when I saw that, so.
Next? Yes.
Well, I too. The excitement of the Estrella Mountain Ranch pump track that opened, I just want to congratulate all the volunteers, the citizens that really helped put that together. It's a great amenity to have in our city. I know it's only phase one and phase two still has to go, but that was really exciting to be there. And then, of course, Harkins. I mean, that was, that was a highlight of the weekend for sure. I also just wanted to mention how proud I am of our own youth commission for the city of Goodyear. And last week, they presented a check to myself and Larry Savarej for the Homeless Youth Connection. They had, at the Tale of Two Cities, had been selling pops and books, I believe, to raise money for the homeless youth. And, and I just, you know, kudos to them for raising money to help, you know, their own, their own teams. And, and I was, I was really proud of them for that.
Great. Next? Yes, Councilman Laura Tonno.
Yeah, I was at the pump track opening as well and I think that brings home what we always hear about our volunteers in our city and that was a volunteer and city effort together. I also was at Harkins and leaving Harkins, there were people lined up for Oregano, I was waiting to get in at like 10:30 or 11 o'clock. They were lined up. So I, I think that is great showing for our city. And I did see the mayor shoveling dirt on Fox. So we have to catch that. I also, when we're talking about volunteers, especially up at our community, our schools have taken some budget cuts. And I let you guys know that our school has gone to, it's kind of bittersweet in a way. It's good to see the parents stepping forward, a GoFundMe page to get $20,000 to fund a librarian position and a media specialist to save this, this job for the school, for the kids. And Channel 12 has picked it up. They are going to run their story this Wednesday. The Arizona Republic has supposedly picked it up and is supposed to have a story and Channel 10 has already run a story on it.
Wonderful.
So they're trying.
Have you heard anything from, I mean, from people that listened on Channel 10 yet?
I, I've seen the story. It was on Facebook and I can share the link with everybody. It's been sent around, so I will send it so you can see the story as well. But I think it really shows when we talk about volunteers and people getting involved, that we really do have the best citizens here.
Councilman Stip.
Yep. I too was at the pump track and the Harkins, both were great. I'm going to look to Nathan. Nathan, did, on Saturday, did, we actually announced the number of volunteer hours. I was astounded while you're walking up. I was astounded by the, the number of days. They, they had, sounded like six straight months with the exception of Christmas or New Year's, Easter Sunday and Super Bowl Sunday. Can you elaborate on it? It's an incredible hours.
Mayor, thank you, Councilmember Stip. Over 100 volunteers totaling 3,000 volunteer hours to construct the track.
It, it's pretty, it's pretty amazing. And I know we, there was some recognition of the, the leadership of that and, and, but I'm wondering, are we planning a come before council recognition of the leadership of that project?
We, we, we haven't had that discussion yet, but it was some thought that, that we could possibly do something under communications to have, have that group recognized.
Yeah, it, you know, we recognize a lot of people in the city for doing a lot of things, but the, the way that they came together and the, and the amount of work that they did and, and I, I just, it was absolutely astounding.
Well, I think the partnership that they organized it and came to the city.
Yeah.
And, and the way it was partner and it started two years ago.
It's been two years in the making, just, just an incredible community project.
Yeah, it was, it was very interesting. So I, I appreciate that. And I think, you know, getting, getting that information out to the rest of the city, it's an amenity that everyone can enjoy. And we identified Saturday that there were several people from outside of Goodyear. But that will become our next best, next best kept secret is that we've got this thing and nobody will know anything about it. Nobody will know the number of hours that were put into building it and, and getting it out there. And I'd really like us to really blow our horn on that.
We'll certainly look to tell our story through, through our means. So absolutely on the same page.
Thanks.
Councilman Holman.
I just wanted to briefly say that I, I was able to stop by the employee picnic this week.
Good.
And we know we have enthusiastic employees who care about each other and who care about our city. And I was there very briefly and I know I didn't see a lot of them, but for those of you who have employees, would you pass on, and I think I can speak for the whole council, how much we appreciate you, your enthusiasm and your love for our city. You are extraordinary.
Thank you. Yes, Councilman Osborne.
I have to put two very special people on the spot up here at this dais. Happy birthday, Mayor, and happy anniversary to you this, this week.
Thank you. Today is our 52nd anniversary. This is how I'm celebrating.
And I think we need to recognize the hard work of a certain Mr. Stip that has graduated with his master's degree. So I, I'm proud of him. Oh gee gosh.
Thank you.
Well, I just want to remind, some of you attended this with me, the Leadership West seminar they had, summit they had this week on the globalization of the West Valley. That was very, very good. The other thing on the same day as the Harkins groundbreaking and the pump track opening, Michael Lewis Company broke ground and they'll be locating in Goodyear. So that was a busy day. At the same time, the bubble, the bubble race was on. And so we had pink, that's right, what is it?
Pink bubble.
Oh, pink bubble, okay. So the city was really busy. And that night, then I attended the 76th anniversary of the Chinese Chamber of Commerce. It was very interesting evening and sat with Mayor Stanton and a, a number of chamber people. And it was a very, very nice one. It was really nice because several people there were Goodyear residents. And so there were a lot of selfie pictures and different pictures taken. So we do have a, a community and, you know, in Goodyear. So that was very, very nice. And the one thing I did that many of you might not know, I was at Whataburger working in the drive-in window.
My favorite place?
Yes. And it was for the campaign, Don't Trash Arizona. So they would take their order and then I'd open the window and I'd shake their hand and ask them not to trash Arizona. And so we had a lot of very good conversations. Three of the customers were from surprise. So I had lunch with Mayor Wilcock today and I said, hey, listen, we're stealing some of your people. They're eating at our restaurants. But, you know, basically it was really, it was fun. We did it for an hour. It was very enjoyable. I met a lot of interesting people and a lot of people that care about keeping their state clean. But just a couple of facts, it costs the state $3 million each year to collect litter from the valley freeways. And that's out of our taxpayer money. Litter costs us when it impacts the ability to attract new business and tourists. And you, the litter costs a loss of productivity and congestion and traffic delays. And as I said to them before, I, when I opened the window, I said, now you've ordered this really good hamburger and it's wrapped in this really nice paper. And I said, it's very good looking, but when you finish that hamburger, I know you're just going to open that window and throw that out. So I reminded them that $5 hamburger would cost them at least $500 for littering. So it was a good cause. It was lots of fun. It's a good way to talk about your city and all those. So it was lots of fun. So, City Manager, I'm going to turn it over to you.
Thank you, Mayor. Members of the council, I have a, a couple of things to just kind of fill in what was talked about, not much. But on Estrella, the falls of Harkins groundbreaking, we estimated over 1,000 attendees. And, and back to the vice mayor's point, it was our largest gathering. And this was for a groundbreaking-
Enthusiastic attendees, by the way.
Yes. And we did have, because I know you're in tune with social media, we had 49, I'd call it 5,000 views and over 5,000 likes as well on Facebook. So it, it really got a lot of attention, picked up by news channels, Fox 10 News, 12 News, and then several of the printed media outlets as well. And the pump track was picked up as well by 3TV and then Printed Media. So we're trying to continue to get the word out and that's one of the ways we do that. The bubble run, just so you know, had about 6,000 people that participated in that. So that was, and they left in groups of 500 at the different starting lines. So that was also going on in our, our community that morning as well. I do have as a reminder, tomorrow is our Goodyear Geared for Growth Event. And that will start, registration 11:30 in the program at noon, our very own mayor, along with the Chris Camacho, President and CEO of the Greater Phoenix Economic Council, and Nate Nathan of, Nate Nathan and Associates. He'll, they'll be speaking as well. So right now, I think our number's around 320, about 320 that are, plan on attending. So it's, it's a big event for us. Mayor, council? Allergies. That was a 12-mile hike in the Estrellas yesterday, did that to me. By policy, also, it, I'm to announce directors to council at the first regular council meeting. And it is my pleasure and privilege to do that tonight. I'll actually have Christopher Baker come on up so you can see him while I go through some of his credentials. He is our new Development Services Director. And a bit about him, he just started this past Monday. So he, he did sit through the work session until 11 o'clock. That was his first day here.
That's a great initiation.
I came back.
But he will, and, and they'll give you a chance to talk in just a moment, my friend. But he'll lead the Planning, Zoning, Building, Safety Code compliance divisions at the Development Services Department. Turned off, there we go. Over 18 years of planning experience in Alabama and Texas. And began as a planner in Texas and then advanced to a director level over in Alabama. His background is really in planning services for residential, commercial, office, healthcare and industrial development projects. So a lot of experience he brings here. He was a Director of Planning and Building at the city of Fairhope, Alabama during their quick growth spurt. And then he worked private sector for a number of years as well, working with a large, a lot of communities during that time. He is a American Institute certified planner, MBA from Auburn University, Masters of City of Regional Planning from University of Texas and a Bachelor in Political Science. So we're excited that he is joining us. And Christopher, if you'd like to say something, it'd be your time.
Sure, thank you, thank you. Mayor, council, it's a pleasure to be here with you tonight. And I'm pleased to announce that I'm a Goodyear resident 10, as of 10 days. So it's a wonderful community. And Mr. Dowkey, thank you for those kind words. You know, really, I believe that the most telling statistic that I ever read in doing my due diligence about this community is the fact that 95% of your residents, of your citizens that you represent, would recommend Goodyear as a place to live. And that is unheard of. And I think that's a testimony to your leadership, to the, the city management leadership team. And also a representative of the dedication, as we heard about the pump track, the volunteers who give their time from Planning and Zoning Commission members, Recreation Department volunteers, that really improve the quality of life of this community. And it goes undoubtedly to say, it also relies a heck of a lot on the hard work and dedication of your staff. And I'd like to compliment you and the city management team. And as you can tell from Mr. Flodan's presentation earlier, the, the level of professionalism is notching up and quite remarkable. And I'm honored and I'm really honored to be part of it. And I look forward to working with you to improve this, continue, continue to improve and keep the tradition of excellence alive in Goodyear. So thank you very much and look forward to working with you.
Thank you and welcome. All finished? Okay, nothing else from the council? Then just to remind you, there's a work session on-
Mayor.
Councilman Stip, I'm sorry.
I did have, for the manager and staff, today we received an email regarding the city news e-notifications. And we were informed that there are currently 59 different news sections that can be subscribed to on the city's website, including news by neighborhood for when there is news specific to only certain areas and 14 different calendars that can be subscribed to. That seems like an awful lot of choices for an individual to try to figure out which one to pick. I'd like to get some more information on how this is being used. I mean, we were informed today that there's only two council members that are currently subscribing to it. And I know I'm subscribing to it under my personal email.
I am.
Yeah, you're one of them.
Oh, oh, I am. Okay, yeah, I'm on all of them.
Yeah. So you signed up for all 59 and all 14 calendars?
Yeah, I want to know what's going on.
We've been talking a great deal over the last month about how do we communicate and getting this information out? And that just seems to be an overly gigantic number, especially having gone through what we went through three years ago with the website. And so I'd like to get some more information, just kind of generically how that is. How many people are signed up? What does the distribution look like? What are we sending out? I mean, if we're going to have to pick between, do we send it, the news to all 59 things? Do we only send it to some of them? I'd like to get an idea on that because we were posed last week with the concept of potentially expanding the in-focus to 12 segments. And we opted not to because we have these other options. But today, we find out that perhaps these other options may be too, maybe too spread out. So I'd like to just get some follow-up information on that if we can.
Anything else? All right. On the fourth is a work session at 5 o'clock. And then on the 11th, we have a work session and a regular meeting at 6 o'clock. So I'm going to adjourn this one, what meeting? If there's anything else anybody wants? All right, this meeting is adjourned and we're going to have to go back to the work session. So we're going to stay right up here on the dais. So are you all right to go right-